Your best friend in real estate. If you're looking for a new job, let M&amp;M Staffing be your guide. With over 20 years of experience, we know how to connect great people with great opportunities. We work with over 80 companies, so we're sure to find the perfect job for you. Our team is dedicated to helping you succeed, and our high customer satisfaction rate proves it. Ready to get started? Visit us at m&amp;mostaffing.net or give us a call today at (931) 347-4255.
For over 50 years, PES Energize has been proudly powering our community in Pulaski and Giles County, Tennessee. We're more than just an electric utility. We also offer internet, TV, and phone services. Our commitment to our customers and our community is what sets us apart. We're dedicated to providing safe, reliable, and innovative services. At PES Energize, we believe that serving you is a privilege. We're here for all your energy needs. Visit pesenergize.com or call us today.
The Natural Gas Department of Pulaski is here to help you save money. Natural gas is safe, efficient, and cost-effective. It's up to 50 to 60% less expensive than electricity for home heating. Plus, it's clean and efficient, so you can feel good about your choice. Call us today for service or visit our website to learn more. Make the switch to natural gas and start saving today.
Hello, everybody. Welcome to the Central Office Boardroom. It is 5:05 on July the 13th. We will start this monthly board meeting off with a roll call. Mr. McAllister.
Here.
Mrs. McLeod.
Here.
Mrs. Gordon.
Here.
Mr. Sumners.
Here.
Mr. Brewer.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
And I am here. We'll stand for a moment of silence, prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Bow our heads. Father, we are humbled by your gift of another day. Please guide us. Please keep us safe. We love you. We praise you. We thank you. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consent agenda, approval of the minutes from the June 1st regular board meeting, and then the June 27th special call meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Under new business disposition of assets, Jake Hammond at our work session offered up a list of things from CTE, from Bridgewater School and Giles County High School. Lots of old computers and old unused welding simulator. Lots of things broken and out of use. Entertaining motion to approve the disposition of these assets.
So moved.
Made and seconded. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Disposition of assets from Ms. Mary Britton at Plastical Elementary. Some old TV mounts, old textbooks. Wanted to bring this front of the board for approval. Talked about this at the work session as well.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Made and seconded. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Field trip, Giles County High School girls soccer team with Coach Ogeron to the Smoky Mountain Cup. It's overnight trip, needs our approval. Heard the work session. None was filled out correctly.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? School fees and electronic device user agreement. This time of year, we ask for all the schools to put in their schools' fees. Just as a reminder from what we discussed, this does require our approval. A family max of $50. And different schools offer different fees based on their needs. And always like to say, this is not a required fee of our students. It is requested.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Emergent 3 was presented to us at the work session by Mr. Hunter. This is a three-year contract. You know, this works in conjunction with other safety measures. If you remember, this gives us real-time feedback, location in the instance of a threat or unforeseen circumstance. So we'll need our approval if we want to pursue that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I will note that Mr. Sumners did not partake in that vote. He is working double duty and on call, so he had to step out. Gun safe proposal. This has been open for us to talk about, putting it together as an administrative procedure. What are we looking at for costs? Purchasing the safes? Are there any additional items that we want to add to it? Dr. Beard and I were talking about some today, and she said a couple of things came up, so...
We had talked, we had been, I had actually reached out to some of the other districts who already have this in place. Murray County is one of those. And one of, well, their officers had suggested that there be a shield in there, because I know that did, that was instrumental in saving some of our officers from being shot in the recent incident that our sheriff's department was a part of several weeks ago. I did reach out to Murray County, but I did not get a response back yet, kind of getting some companies that we might could get some information from. In looking at, which will come up in a little bit too, that the MOU with our, the SRO, this new safety grant that is coming our way, we are going to have to be responsible for having these in our buildings. And I want to be sure that we get the proper training and have the proper devices or instruments, pieces of equipment, whatever that we can look at. I know Sheriff Hilton has been looking at where we can get these. Chief Beard has looked at talking to some people about where we could get these. I know getting eight of them hopefully would be a quantity discount from, from some of these. But we are not ready to actually send you a proposal of amounts or exactly devices at this point in time, so...
I'd recommend that we table this because, and it'll make a little bit more sense when we get to item J on here, but table it for the purpose of, there's a principals' meeting coming up.
Coming up Monday, Tuesday.
And we can get more intake on that, because one of our question was, if we're going to name a second, who is that second? Is it a person or is it a position? I think some of the initial stuff was maybe it's going to be a person and not a position because of, based on who's in that position. So I think if we give that a little bit more time, but as we get into item J, and probably should have made it more like G, but I think it'll make a little bit more sense, and we can get our administrative portion of this tightened up a little bit more. And then when we do take a vote on it, it will be, it'll be a full, full piece.
Move the tables such time that we can get all of our ducks in a row on this thing, all right, everything we need. I was fixing to suggest another vest, but if a shield would be, would be, would be bad. Because I know we had another vest in ours.
Shield would be nice. Shield, seems like it would be. Any thought about it? Motion been made. Table it as we gather more information. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any additional discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We'll be able to work through that, I think, a lot stronger in this next work session. Recommendations for teacher tenure. You have these teachers who are here, who have been vetted, who have passed the criteria, and it is their time to be up for tenure. Board policy requires our approval. Dr. Beard put the teacher tenure policy in our folders. We are a little bit behind on this, and I know that we left the door open, because we did add one more, I think, but we thought there might be more. But if you look at, what is it, three? Three, where, where were we talking about, Dr. Beard? Where? Can you announce it like before a salary skid? Re-initiate the salary contract or?
It's, I read that here.
No.
It's at the...
Are we looking at a new, a different model policy at that time?
No, sir. I, I read it as I printed it. It's number one, on the bottom of page one. The Director of Schools will recommend teachers eligible for tenure at a board meeting and ample time to send notice of non-renewal to each teacher not recommended for tenure within five business days. That's policy that non-renewals have to be delivered, hand-delivered or sent certifi, or emailed or sent certified mail. We hand-deliver those, because I think that's the professional way to do that, and then follow up with the email. But to be timely, that has to be within the last five instructional or business days, or the last day instructional day. So we are past that point if anyone is not approved.
So we wanted to, I guess, make that point, we need to do this at our board meeting in May?
It would need to probably be in April.
April.
So that there is plenty of time. It should be discussed probably at the work session in April, approved or not approved at the May meeting, so that there's ample time to have that five days before the last day of instruction, if anyone is not approved.
And to the point of the question the last time, it is. It's, you're up for tenure, you've checked all the boxes, you get put up for it, but then if, if for some reason we didn't approve it, then that teacher would, would be term, would be non-renewed. And that's the laws of tenure, so... So in the event of something like that happening, we need to move this back to April work session and May board meeting. But we're beyond that, and we are here now. Entertaining motion to approve tenure for these teachers?
So moved.
Questionnaire.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Oh, they are? Okay, yeah. Why don't you before, sorry, I apologize.
Several of these teachers are here tonight, and I do think they deserve recognition. Mandy Sanders from Hunter Hill School. She is our pre-K teacher. Corey Hickman, Giles County High School. World History and American History. Candace Garland, Southside Elementary School. And Christina Harris from Southside Elementary School. Yes. If y'all will come around, Ms. Sagowitz wants to take a picture, please, so that we can...
All right. Item H, the school nutrition biz, these are the commodity biz that we talked about at the work session. Needs our approval. Did we not vote? We were just in the discussion part?
I interrupted with the recognition. I apologize.
Well, that's, okay, my bad. Any additional discussion or comments? Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Got it.
Team effort, team effort.
School nutrition biz, commodity biz, 917,000 pages in that, I didn't... But it needs our approval. Entertaining motion to approve is, was presented to us from the work session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? E-dynamic learning, Mr. Hammond presented on that a couple times, and then the grant has been funded. We need to approve those dollars in acceptance.
Motion to approve.
Second.
What's the grant funding for the e-dynamic learning? We did that, yeah. Just make sure that sounds right. Any discussion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, item J, the memorandum of understanding between the sheriff's department and the Giles County Board of Education. This came out of legislation. This is the template for this memorandum of understanding. And as Dr. Beard and I were looking through it, and then she was explaining more to me, when we get to section three, it says that LEA provides, and in that, you'll see under the first I, two chairs, a gun safe, a lockable file cabinet, and so on and so forth. So in the middle of us, wanting to do those ourselves, state and some of these new safety features and whatnot have kind of helped lay the tracks for us on that in essence. Those things are required, but not, not limited to them. So in the administrative or whatever we wanted to add in terms of shield and whatnot, we can dial all that in too, so they'll work in conjunction. Since this is a memorandum of understanding, entertain a motion to accept this memorandum.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Athletic trainer services. Comp trailer has been, been kind with us and leading us through things, and when we get into any kind of agreement, financial obligation, says, you know, we need to move this by board approval. And this is a contract. When we get into these athletic trainer contracts, these are for a full fiscal year. I know we did not fully get into these, but when, these are timely with sports and everything that we have going on. I think we will have to revisit some stuff in the near future as this cost is set to increase. And this cost for this contract, Dr. Beard?
5,000.
5,000.
With the expectation it would increase to 10 for the 24-25 school year.
Entertaining motion to approve this contract? This is with Star Physical Therapy and their training staff.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
How long is the contract for? Is it for two years?
One, just one year. They just went ahead. They wanted us to know a year in advance that they would be asking for an increase, so that we could plan accordingly or whatever we needed to do. And it, they did include the statement early. Though it was contingent upon funding, I don't know if that was in there. Because I think that's something that'll have to be reevaluated before the 24-25 school year.
Okay, so we're not locking in on the 24-25 with this?
It's listed in that agreement, phased during this agreement. But we can't commit to anything prior to the next fiscal year. So I can make an addendum, like before we sign that, we can add to that, that we cannot commit to that prior to that fiscal year.
Want to make sure that's noted in this vote?
Yes. That we will be amended. Because we can't commit to anything prior to that.
The motion was to accept this contract, but it looks like this contract does include that heads up. Someone make an amendment to the motion? To only lock in the 23-24 year?
Do you want to make the motion? I'll make that amendment, that we'll just lock in for the one year. About that.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded for the amendment of the motion to the contract to lock in the 23-24 year at degree upon price of $5,000. Any discussion, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Item L, UT Southern and Giles County Board of Education Dual Enrollment Agreement. UT Southern requests that we spend 4,000 to go towards textbooks. Dr. Beard, anything else to add to that?
No, sir. They too have asked that we think about increasing that amount of money. And anytime there's money involved in an agreement, we want to be sure that you all are in agreement with what we're doing, so... It said that most teachers or professors are going to an online textbook only, not the hardback textbooks, and they're actually higher. And that subscription is only good for the one year, whereas textbooks usually could be used for one year, or more, more than one year at a time. But that is, that agreement is locking us in to the 4,000 for this academic year.
Me, dual enrollment courses are we doing with them? You know?
It's on here.
Is that what it is?
Those are the options that students do have, and some of those are on our campus and some are on UT Southern campus.
Quite a few pretty, pretty awesome accessibility and... Entertaining motion to approve this request. Basically goes through this understanding with dual enrollment with UT Southern.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Disposition of assets, this was added since the work session. It's from Ms. Lynn Jose at Bridgewater Elementary. From what I could see, what I looked through, looked like old computers and monitors. Just want our blessing to put those out, put those out to pasture.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to dispose of these assets from Bridgewater Elementary School. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Item N, budget amendment. It's hit the agenda a little late, and then we got paperwork and financial management is here, and I can roll if you don't mind.
Sure. So the first piece of the amendment is going to be carryover of purchase orders from June 30th that we did not have any voices for. So that's what we're doing with that, is we close those out June 30th, and then we reopen them with the same purchase order, but we open them up in the new fiscal year. So basically, those funds rub in a fund balance, a horse pull, and then right back out. So it's just a timing thing. And also, the insurance piece, it's been discussed about the property insurance going up. We're making the adjustments for that. I'm showing that that's coming out of fund balance. However, we had some unused textbooks funds that we were able to free up right at June 30th. So basically, it's more than one way to look at that. It's always this coming out of fund balance. You could reference the videos coming from those excess funds that we have available. And then the last piece, or the second to last piece, is the Innovative School Models Grant for the over. You all have previously approved that. I want to say maybe back in April or May. We only spent around $60,000, so we're also having to rebudget those funds into this fiscal year. And again, that is all grant funds on those. And then the very back page is also year-end cleanup, and it's where we're taking the both of capital projects funds and aligning those to where our cash balance was at the end of the fiscal year, including those funds in addition to what was already budgeted. So that is just an accounting issue. There's not any money being transferred. It's just placing them in the right place order to be able to utilize those. Do I have any questions?
If not, thank you. Entertaining motion to accept these budget amendments?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Perkins Grant, CTE for fiscal year '24. The total adjusted allocation came in, is that right, Mr. Hammond? At 83,000 plus, since its time sensitive, and we just got that notification, needs board approval so they can utilize those funds. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept these grant funds in excess of $83,000. Discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, on to the good stuff. Policies for first reading. Again, if I'm fast, we did this in the work session. If you have any questions, by all means, ask them. I'll try to go through these quickly and notice the, note the highlights that I have. We'll fire through them. 1.402, notification of meeting... 1.402, Notification of Meetings, this is part of setting an annual agenda, setting that 48 hours is required for a special call, meeting, and the time, yeah, those times are added to the agenda, sorry.
We can get Mrs. Perkins to add the annual agenda like you all received at the retreat on our website, so that will be evident, unless we make some kind of change due to a holiday or something, that would be the expectation, we have those meetings.
Entertaining motion to approve Policy 1.402, Notification of Meetings, as we've discussed?
So moved. Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion, questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Policy 1.404, Appeals to, and appearances before the board. This is the one that's been adjusted by the state, means that we have to include a placeholder in our agenda when it is a board meeting or a meeting on something that is, requires a vote, or actionable item. As we discussed in the work session, we would ask that if it is an item that someone is asking to add to the agenda, that they submit their request within three business days of the board meeting, and that, and that is the way it has been up until this point, either to speak before the board, or to add an, add to, add an item to the agenda. A single person will be given five minutes to speak, no more total than 15 minutes for a topic, or what you're talking about on that agenda. And if there's a group here and they want someone to speak in their place, only one person can do that. And we could even, well, we'll get to that later. Entertaining motion to accept Policy 1.404 on this first reading as the model policy and as we have adjusted it.
So moved. Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion or questions?
In the work session, we decided we did not have to change it to match the 48 hours for the previous, right? Because those are special, essentially, we're only going to use that for special call meetings, and this is for-
Correct.
Regular.
So special call has that special set agenda?
Yeah.
Good question. Any additional questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Policy 3.202, Emergency Preparedness Plan, this is simply in line with recent legislative changes, annual drills, we're looking at adopting the model policy. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Policy 3.205, Security, same thing, in line with recent legislative changes, certain requirements, the exterior doors, remember, there will be some slaps on the wrist.
Withhold funding.
Withhold funding, more than a slap.
Yes. We do get an opportunity to correct it, and funding would be restored, but we don't want to take that chance.
This would be all hands on deck, principals down, central office down, down, teachers?
Yes.
Aides, everyone?
Students, everyone.
Kids, just get the kids on board.
Yes.
Everyone needs to be invested in safety, absolutely. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Policy 4.300, Extracurricular Activities, updating to match the model policy, these are for those activities outside of school, but that are school-sponsored. Entertaining motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Made and seconded, any discussion or any questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Policy 4.403, Library Materials, this is adopting the most recent model policy, this has changed a couple times, model policy, set in there that has to go through a committee as first, and then go down the line before it finds its way here, just making it a little bit more rigorous and responsible.
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made and seconded, Ms. Smith. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Policy 5.305, Family Medical Leave, this is, again, adopting the most recent policy, and it includes paternity and paid parent leave. Motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Policy 6.300, Code of Conduct, we wanted to add the new testing ability to determine THC present at 3.0, over 3.0, and then, and that will result in a zero tolerance offense. Mass threats are new to zero tolerance offenses, so we need to add mass threats into our code of conduct as a zero tolerance behavior. Motion made, seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? There, at Policy 6.309, the zero tolerance offenses with mass threats added, then we'll also add the THC testing as a controlled substance, as identified as a controlled substance, when it registers 3.0 or higher, for higher than 3.0, making it a zero tolerance offense.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Policy 6.314, Corporal Punishment, new state laws we discussed in the work session, brings in those new regulations. The additional ones that kind of bring certain things into question, Dr. Beard, is that lower than this?
No, sir, it's D.
D.
Consider the need to conduct an evaluation, because we discussed at the work session, if you all remember, it, once a decision has been made to conduct an evaluation, the school system has 60 days to be able to conduct that evaluation, and if you're going through the RTI process to determine that, there has to be a collection of at least eight to 12 data points, which is eight if you do weekly, and 12 if you do biweekly. So you're still looking at 60 days or 12 weeks before that determination can be made, whether or not there is a disability per federal law. You know, we discussed, if the infraction has occurred today, and 60 days later, there's the decision to do administer corporal punishment, it doesn't match the timing.
And those assessments have to be done, like, at the start of that day, they can't use old data to do that, it has to be a brand-new assessment.
And there has to be a sit team done before you proceed with either of those, so there's a lot of time involved from the infraction to the time that you could administer the corporal punishment based on D. So it, corporal punishment's kind of designed to be immediate, and the way D has been incorporated into the policy per legislation, kind of changes how that can be done.
I think we talked about our, our risk in this, is someone with IEP, or-
If a child has an IEP or a 504 plan, it has to be written into that plan that corporal punishment can be administered, and that's been in place for a couple of years now. If it's not written into that IEP or 504 plan, it cannot be administered.
We had that talk to adopt the model policy as it is, knowing that we, that Item D is in there, and doesn't seem effective, or trying to skate away from this. I know what they put out there about removing it a couple of times, and we're still getting feedback from our principals, that they're not ready to remove it altogether, is that correct?
Right. I think they don't like the, some have expressed that they don't really like the idea of it being no option at all, but then when you think about D, I think that does change how it could be administered. But that's, you know, it's up to you, adopt the model policy or delete.
It's a tool in your tool chest, you take it out, and you don't have it. I mean, that being a former ag teacher and assistant principal, there's just some folks that, that's the way you get, you had to get through their brain, I mean, that's the bottom end up, but, you know, you don't want to use it as a, as a rash type of thing, you don't want to do it ever when you're angry. You don't, you just want to use it and say, hey, there are consequences.
Do you think it'll still have the same effectiveness 60 days later, though?
No.
I mean, just as devil's advocate, I mean, I-
I don't think so. I mean, it's, it's something that needs to be, I really think it's, you want to establish that evaluation maybe at the first of the year.
It has to be done at the infraction.
At the infraction?
Yes. That's what I asked, to make sure, like, could we use-
Get in the mainstream.
You have to do that check.
Did we not, did it not used to be, if that was in our IEP, you could or couldn't?
Yes, sir, but it, the law, recent legislative changes have changed it now, so prior to administering, the student's teacher or principal shall document that he or she has done those four things, and then if you, if they considered the need to evaluate, then that's going to have to be 60 days or up to 12 weeks from that determination, so.
Well, do we want to write something in and say, an if, an if that is considered, that that student needs to follow up IEP or 4, that 504, that-
It's a team decision to whether those students qualify, and it's up to the school psychologist to be involved with that. If you leave the model policy, it is very rarely used in our district, I can tell you that, and some schools don't use it at all, but if you leave the model policy, then it is still a tool in the toolbox, as Mr. Brewer mentioned, but we must make sure all those have been addressed to make sure that we don't get into some kind of legal situation.
You don't want somebody honoring that every time you're going to conduct it, that I, you know, to get where it won't be carried out for 60 days, I'm going to get an evaluation before I get one.
And we have to turn in to the state how many instances of corporal punishment we have utilized. And may I ask Mr. Sutton a question? We had fewer than 10 instances, did I recall that correctly, for this past school year?
I think you do. I'm glad you get to write the policy.
You are in the know, aren't you, Mr. Sutton?
I would, I would just throw this out again, just, I don't know, do we want to include in here that if the student is determined to have a disability, like, what do we want to do after that? I mean, because I feel like we're all of the same page, that like, after 60 days, and it's like, yes, they do have a disability, we're not going to be like, now, spank them? I just-
Oh, do you remember when you did such and such, 60 days?
Can I have this chore to write it? Well, yours wouldn't be this long.
Nope.
Or do we just want to leave it here with the understanding that this is the model policy, we're going to follow that, and not complicated?
I think if the principals still want it in place.
Yeah.
Because they're the ones that's dealing with these kids every day.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not going to argue what the principals want, that's for sure. I just think we all had the biggest concern of the evaluation timeframe, and then the punishment behind, beyond that.
And I just, I wanted to be absolutely clear to cover our tails, too, as to when those assessments had to be, if we could get them out of the way early, and that would still fall, that would be fine, but if not, that would bring more punishment, you know?
If they consider there's not a need to give them that evaluation, can they just?
Yeah, if they checked A, B, and C, and then when they got to D, we need to consider it, but it's a child that really doesn't need that consideration, then I guess corporal punishment can be administered.
As long as parent permission is on file.
Parent permission on file.
And every school says that.
Entertaining motion to approve this model policy as it is written?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any additional discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Policy 6.319, Alternative Education, this is in line with recent legislative changes, just looking to use the model policy. Entertaining motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Policy 6.4001, Student Surveys, Analyses, Evaluations, this is in line with recent legislative changes, too, we're just looking to adopt the model policy, and the highlight is surveys and evaluations, all of these things will now require written parental consent. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Policy 6.402, Physical Examining Nations and Immunization, same, same thing, recent changes, using the model policy. Parental consent.
I have a question about this, would, if we have a teacher that comes up and say, hey, this child is struggling, they're, they've got headaches every day, they're, they're struggling to see the board, you know, they, we've had patients, we've had teachers come down, when I sub for Penny, that brought them to me, would we have to say, well, let me get permission first, and then-
Would we have to say, well, let me get permission first, and then I can evaluate them? Or is that...
It would be my understanding of that is that there has always been the ability to conduct the basic. If there's a problem with that basic assessment there with the school nurse, and they always have sent home, you know...
Sure.
Feel like that there needs to be further investigation or doctor visit or something of that nature. You have to remember, when, when students are enrolled into a public school, we're covered by in loco parentis, which gives us the authority to act as the parent in, in that regard. So I think you could still legally do that, what school nurses do, before getting invasive into anything else. And it's just based on a recommendation, that they would continue to take them to an eye doctor or something of that nature. So that's not your typical health screening.
No, I mean, it wouldn't be, but an eye exam would be part of the screening, so I thought, oh, it might be a little tricky. I just didn't want anybody to...
And we have to develop an administrative procedure for how that works. And it was kind of my thoughts, that we might kind of put those things that we know, maybe like a checklist, so that they could check on which ones they are giving permission for. Again, that's going to be something we kind of discuss next week at our principals' meeting. So I want their input into how we devise that, because they're going to be the ones who have to be responsible for getting it brought back down.
Absolutely. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve Model Policy 6.402 regarding physical examinations, examinations and immunizations. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Policies for a second reading, 5.310, vacations and holidays. We're adding Juneteenth, June 19th to the holiday schedule. This only affects 12-month employees, but it is a recognized holiday, and we need to put it on our vacations and holidays.
Make a motion. So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Since our next board meeting, well, really, this board meeting had actionable items on it, and the public comment portion of Policy 1.404 included that. Of course, we're only through our first reading of it, but with the board's permission, or we can even discuss this now, I would recommend that when we add this to our agenda, it will have a placeholder. And I would say, I'd say we put it here right before board comments. That way, if there is a visitor who has made it to this point in the meeting, and they had a question or comment about one of our actionable items, they would be able to hear our take on it before. And then any one time after that, a board member, if they heard something argumentated, they could raise a motion to go back to that policy and rediscuss it or do whatever we wanted to do there. The other way would be to put it before we read through the policies. That would also be before we've fully hashed out and gone through the policy, like we tend to do.
After. Think at the end would be better.
It also protects you if you get somebody that goes wacko, not use the word that, but then you could close the meeting, but all your good business has been done.
I agree with that. It's not on the agenda, but to keep in line with the law, even though we're getting the cart, cart a little bit, front of the horse, would it be permissible by the board to open public comment at this time?
What do you do?
You just need to motion it.
Yeah.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that was basically an amendment to our agenda at this point. We are open for public comment. This will be going forward. Everybody get ready. And again, if it's someone wanting to add something to the agenda, they will have to go through the three-day period beforehand, so on and so forth. This is where a state legislature said that we have to have public comment available at every meeting. Also in that, if you read, it's at my discretion to let them speak, especially if they go off tangent or they try to put it to someone else. Anytime in any of these kind of things, any of you all can say point of order. If somebody stands up and goes off on a racial tangent or a religious tangent or whatever, if I haven't stopped them yet, you simply say point of order, and I either agree or disagree with that, and, and then we move forward from there. So we can, we can be welcoming, and we can open the floor to discussion and a, and a good argument, but we can also control it. Each individual only gets five minutes, total of 15 minutes per topic.
There's a word called reasonableness that you go by.
Yep. I'm going to even put that on there, reasonable. Like the speed limit in Montana, reasonable improvement?
Yeah.
I know you've seen that.
I ain't nuts.
All right. No public comment. Now the board comments.
Oh, I recently went up to the county commission meeting where they voted for our, ours and everybody's budget, and in that was our salary packet for our employees. And I just want people to know that didn't just happen. That happened as a result of many hours of hard work by Dr. Beard, Knox, Ms. Sumner's office, and several county commissioners. So I just want to thank all of you for your hard work and getting that done for our employees.
I'm just going to point out, he did not sit with us. He didn't want to be seen with us, but that's okay. We know our feelings. No, I definitely agree, and, and those changes did not go unnoticed. I have gotten quite a bit of appreciation and feedback, to send appreciation, you know, to the board for that. As we have a new school year just around the corner, oh my goodness, I can't believe summer's over already almost, but I have, I'm excited for a new year. I think it's going to be a great year, continuation of growth. Happy birthday, Skye. And that's all I have. You're up, sister.
Sixty-two.
Twenty-nine, again.
I was going to say, yes, thank you to definitely financial office, because that's more numbers than my brain can come. I'm a science, not math. So thank y'all very much. I've had at least five different people text in the school system and out of the school system thanking us for getting raises for our teachers, and a couple out of county asking about jobs. So I think it was very well needed for certain. And so we only have two weeks left to pull together, right? And happy birthday, Skye.
Happy birthday.
Thank you, I've got my pad.
We're going to need signed permission.
That's right there.
She's like, I got you.
I can't believe the time has gone by so fast, and it is time for another school year to start. And I also have had calls and even being stopped in the store from people who are just really, that is so good, I may, I may sign up to sub, you know? And I've also had teachers that were really appreciative of the steps being had. You know, we have been, what, 20 years? And that means a lot to a lot of people. I wish they, I didn't make it, I wasn't going to stay third anyway, but I, I got as many as I could. But I'm so appreciative for everything being passed and the windows and everything, the jobs down, how they've been moving, what they've been doing. So let's get ready and get our shoes on and we're ready for another school year.
Thank y'all. Knox, y'all, all, everybody that did work on this, on this school, the teachers' salaries and salaries for all, all over. It's a long time coming, and it's a great, great start. And just keep, keep it up. We're, we can get even, even more maybe at some point. Attract those teachers that we need to attract. It's hard, real hard to do that if you're, you're not getting what they're worth.
Yeah.
And so thank y'all, all, everybody that did, did all that work on it. Just have a good start to the next year, and make it a great one.
First of all, Rich, I didn't realize I had 30 or 60 days when you patted me on school. We could have talked it over. No, I'd like to, you know, thank everybody in financial. I've got a lot of feedback on the, the raises, very appreciative. Makes them feel important, makes them want to keep their roots here in the county, stay in the system, besides, you know, jumping from here to there. And thank everyone that dug and pulled hard in our county commission to prove it, and keep pushing to stay ahead of other counties. Thank y'all.
I think principals were tasked with holding on to their people and telling them to sit tight and trust the process and sit in there and wait. We know the money's coming, we're, we're just, we just got to go through it, and so kudos to them as well. You know, every week, it seems like we're in here accepting money for grants. Good job, all of our grant writers, several in this room. So thank y'all. Renovation tour, if you guys want to try to do that, maybe I'll send an email or a text out in the next week or so. Probably maybe next week might work best, if anybody's available, and we figure out a time to jump in there and jump out. They just need a head ups, heads up on how many hard hats they need and try to, try to do it. But we had an update meeting yesterday. Everything's moving through. We're going to, a couple of hiccups, as there always are. It might be a little warm on the front end of the school for the first four or five weeks, just waiting on some units to get in that we promised to be in, but they, they aren't just yet. Other than that, seems like things are moving, moving pretty smoothly, and all the extra time we spent on some things is starting to pay off and looking good. But I think a tour for us would be really good, and it might help us look forward on a couple of things, too.
Early in the morning?
Early in the morning, yeah. Yeah, especially right now. They've got a lot, they got the chiller hooked back up, got a lot of parts of the high school blowing cold air again, and started the cleanup process, because it's multiple clean, cleanups, multiple, so just trying to bust it out.
And I think to follow his comment there, it was discussed, I wasn't on the call, but it was discussed, that maybe we find an alternate location for our general sessions, and we have done that. We will be communicating that to everybody, but I think I can go ahead and mention that. We'll be using the First Baptist Church Sanctuary and their basement room, because they're one of the few places that will have parking as well as space for us. We had contemplated another school, but it's centrally located to stay here in town, and it will be held Thursday, July 27th. We'll be there from about 7:00 to 3:00. General sessions will be at First Baptist Church. Mets, UT Southern Cafeteria will be providing our lunch that day. There are about 45 vendors that Jesse Parker and the Chamber of Commerce have recruited to set up and do giveaways and whatnot for our staff that day. So we're looking forward to a big kickoff day that day. There will be air in places at the high school, but it would just be a little better if we're not in there, you know, walking around and being in their way, I guess, because they are trying to really get things accomplished so that we can return to school.
Yeah, that's their last week of cleanup, as they explained it and kind of punch list stuff and whatnot. So if they can just keep their heads to, heads down, they can hopefully, they will be ready for, for school, for, for that phase of it, anyway. And then they'll start the rotation of four rooms at a time with bringing in the new HVAC unit and the mechanical and electrical and tying all that stuff in, so. It's going to be nice. Work session is July 20th. Board meeting is August 3rd, and that's that first full week back to school. Work session is August 17th, and then Fall District meeting is in Fayetteville September 14th. So that's what we've got on the horizon.
Before you adjourn, I need a list of everybody who wants to go to convention in November and who's going, because the Fall District will be in Fayetteville. So I think the reservation...
I'll be at the district. I'll be at both.
Yep, be at both. Fall District and Convention?
Both.
Both.
Pressure's on. What about you? When's Fall? Fall District is September...
When was Convention again? November... 16th through the 19th.
Got to wait with stuff.
That's where you get your in-house training.
But keep in mind, you need to be there Thursday night, Friday, and Saturday to get your full credit for the TSBAC conference. It's more costly, but you need to be there to get your credit for your hours.
Yeah.
Say yeah, and then?
Yeah.
And then we'll...
We can change our reservations.
Your rooms would be the thing you would adjust, I think. That's because that's usually what I have to do.
If something happens that you can't go, I can cancel the reservation.
No, you got to stay.
Otherwise, you're getting the cotton crackers.
All right, we got it all done. I think some, some people want to go.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you all.